Good evening. We'll begin with the pleasure of the lead saying invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Colpak? Here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. Health Fargo Cast Public Health Director Desi Fleming received the 2022 Friend of Medicine Award from North Dakota Medical Association. This award is given each year to a non-physician who has distinguished themselves by serving as an effective advocate for healthcare, patient services, or profession of medicine. Desi was given the award in recognition of her outstanding and selfless public health leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Desi. Library. North Dakota Job Service will offer onsite walk-in services at the main library on October 18th from 2:00 to 4:00. The session is free and registration is not required. Services available include job-seeking assistance, veteran services, information and training programs, resume building assistance, limited unemployment insurance assistance, and migrant and seasonal farm work services. Teens are also invited to create creepy crafts on October 20th at 2:00 p.m. at the main library. All materials will be provided. And the weekly craft afternoon events for kids continues through December 13th on Mondays at Carlson Library and Tuesdays at Northport Library. Sessions are from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. Water. During the annual North Dakota Water and Pollution Control Conference held recently in Bismarck, the city of Fargo's water was voted as the best tasting tap water in North Dakota. Fargo earned the title through blind test taste, and Fargo has been invited to compete in the American Water Works Association National Tasting Contest of June of 2023. So that's a great honor our team got, and they've worked hard on it. The Red River is hard to clean up. There are two videos tonight on the ComGA team. The first is the highlights of the expansion project at the Fargo Water Reclamation Treatment Facility, which is nearing completion. When completed, the project will double the treatment capacity to 29 million gallons per day, and the expansion will expect to be operational in early 2023. This will truly help many people in the community and what West Fargo is especially excited about, to get rid of their lagoons, right? Yeah. Also, the second video is about the city of Fargo Native American Commission and Indigenous Association, who co-hosted a kickoff event for Indigenous People's Day. The festivities included a Gladys Ray Indigenous People's Day Award presented to Darlene Tenberg for her dedication and service to the Native American community. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving items three and five from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda?
That's a move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 3, 2022 Regular Meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda, items one through 35, excluding items three and five, which have been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now, we're going to have resident comments, and I just wanted to explain the decorum of this room is that we don't clap or cheer for anybody's discussion, only because it really intimidates other speakers, because if they don't have a crowd behind them, that kind of favors them or likes them, they feel a little intimidated to talk. So, we try to make it as easy for anybody who wants to speak, because it's a big room, and it's hard to get up here and speak sometimes. So, that is why we don't allow clapping and cheering after our speakers. My first-person speaker would be Wes Filome.
Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd and Anuwe Magic and justice for Shane Netherville. During the last City Commission meeting, Deputy Mayor Pepcorn shamelessly attacked our indigenous and houseless community. The mayor finally spoke up after being compelled by Commissioner Colpak. He advised Pepcorn to stick to the facts. But six years ago, when Pepcorn went on a racially charged crusade claiming that New Americans were infecting the people of Fargo with tuberculosis, despite available studies showing otherwise, he was not told to stick to the facts. A short time later, when he again attacked our marginalized community by claiming refugees were costing the city millions of dollars. He cannot interrupt me while I'm speaking. I'm going to start over.
Wasn't one of the roles saying you're supposed to address the issues and not the person?
That is the issue, and the issue at hand today is rescinding the deputy mayor's position. I'm not attacking him in any way, shape, or form. I'm simply speaking towards his actions, and he shouldn't be able to interrupt me in that way. That's something you can decide to do if you feel need, mayor, but he shouldn't be able to do it like that. That is not fair and disrespectful.
Let's finish your speech.
Can we start over so I can get this out, please?
I think we're caught up.
My thing, you know, is prepared, and you know it's timed, so there's just no way.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we please start that over one more time? My thing is timed, so I'll start it when I speak. Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd and Anuwe Magic and justice for Shane Netherville. During the last City Commission meeting, Deputy Mayor Pepcorn shamelessly attacked our indigenous and houseless community. The mayor finally spoke up after being compelled by Commissioner Colpak. He advised Pepcorn to stick to the facts. But six years ago, when Pepcorn went on a racially charged crusade claiming New Americans were infecting the people of Fargo with tuberculosis, despite available studies showing otherwise, he was not told to stick to the facts. A short time later, he again attacked our marginalized community by claiming refugees were costing the city millions of dollars. He was not told to stick to the facts. When he brought national shame to our city and commission by spewing disinformation during a pandemic, as our mayor and a doctor of the highest order, you did not tell him to stick to the facts. When he leveraged his position with the city to destroy Representative Raj Jones's campaign with a basis and slanderous attack, he was not told to stick to the facts. When he stuck his middle finger at Garrick. When he stormed out of the meeting with Airport Authority. When he went on the radio and circumvented due process by calling for the firing of our chief, no reprimand. But if we have so much clap inside these walls, we're threatened to be tossed out of City Hall like animals. Yet during the same City Commission, we're called to clap for the Finance Department. We've also been called to clap countless times during previous meetings, meaning we're only allowed to clap if the mayor says so. That is the definition of a dictatorship. How can you hold us to a higher standard than our deputy mayor? Pepcorn has been so relentless in his attacks on our vulnerable communities that in 2017, you all had to pass a measure proclaiming the city of Fargo a city of inclusivity. How can that be so with a bully like him continually in power? A Somali man was beaten, and two New American women's lives were threatened as a result of Pepcorn's racist rhetoric. I'd like to thank Commissioner Preston and Strand for finally standing up and doing something about it. We, the people, deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commission. I want to show my support to rescind the deputy mayor's position. At the Fargo City Commission meeting on Monday, October 3rd, I observed Commissioner Pepcorn, an elected official making demoralizing, ignorant, and racial comments towards our Native brothers and sisters. Tears streamed down my face as I listened to him dehumanize people of our community. The elected officials of the Fargo City Commission are to use factual data in their statements and represent all people of this city without racial bias. Pepcorn's actions and continued racist and ignorant comments prove racism, and discrimination is embedded in our local government. How are we, the citizens, able to move forward, become part of the solution, and continue the fight for equality, when such racism and discrimination exists within the government that represents us? The Fargo City Commission meetings are supposed to be a place where the concerns and issues of homelessness, mental health, addiction, and police brutality can be addressed. However, noteworthy impact or solutions can or will be made if met with ignorance and racially biased thought, process, and opinions. We need leaders who are joining the fight for equality and focus on creating solutions, rather incarceration as the only option. Our fellow citizens locally to globally will not flourish until racism and discrimination is eradicated. We, the citizens, need to hold our elected officials accountable to bringing equality for the entire city that they are elected to represent. Anything less is continued racism that threatens the safe existence of our BIPOC citizens of this city and Fargo morehead. We are here to hold the city of Fargo government responsible for ensuring the life, ensuring the flourishing of life and all its people. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a criminal citation that I received for playing an unplugged bass guitar on a sidewalk in this city. Why are we issuing criminal citations to people playing an instrument on a city sidewalk? It seems a little excessive. In order for a government to limit freedom of speech, it must be narrowly tailored and serve a significant government interest. I'd like to know what the city of Fargo's significant government interest is here. Generally, cities try to use public safety as the reason, and I'm having a difficult time attributing this situation to a public safety issue. Let's face it, the people on the sidewalks are not going downtown after 10:00 p.m. to shop for the latest wares or go to a quiet library. They're going to the bars. I go down there to have a little fun, playing some music, and meanwhile intoxicated people are yelling, car tires are screeching, horns are honking, all while being completely ignored by police. I've witnessed it personally. There must have been five or six loud and unnecessary noise violations occurring at the same time you had three officers after me for playing an unplugged bass guitar. What a waste of resources. I even mentioned it during the interaction, was completely ignored. Hard not to feel like I'm being targeted here. And if we use your logic of crowds affecting public safety or for whatever significant government interest you have here, there's only one single solution. You must immediately close the bars at 10:00 p.m. It couldn't be more simple. I understand that may not bode well with public opinion, but I also don't believe stopping street performances after 10:00 p.m. does either. From my experience, whether you like it or not, people do really enjoy it. If you're going to continue to allow people on the streets after 10:00 p.m. drinking at bars, there's no good reason that people cannot be on a sidewalk with instruments at the same time. You need to stop equating a street performance to loud noise. You know, maybe it'd be easier to talk about performances that don't involve any sound levels. Do we plan to issue criminal citations to someone who wanted to do a caricature show, drawing pictures for people? Would you issue criminal citation for a mime? Sorry, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christopher Cohen. I'm Fargo resident. And he/his/him, I forgot to say that. And I want to say the police chief, he still feels the same way regarding the new wildlife management plan, and that it's a safety issue in the parks. He hasn't changed his opinion, and I agree with that. I think it's still a safety issue. And the, one of the arguments the city has used up until now is that the old plan was safe. And, you know, one reason you could claim it was safe was because of the rules in it, which are now missing. So, most of the rules of the previous wildlife management plan are not in the ordinance you passed at the last meeting, nor are they in this new resolution before you tonight. So, and mysteriously, also, the new promised safety measures are missing as well. So, the lighted NOCS that are promised would be used, that hunters could more easily find their steel-tipped arrows, that's not anywhere. The tree stands, deer stands, being raised to 12 feet, so that you're less likely to deflect an arrow and have it go further out where you won't find it, that's nowhere. Even the, well, anyways, I'll say those. But what I don't understand though is why all the existing rules are removed. And those include, like, the definition section. So, we no longer have a tree stand definition, so you can't define the tree stand as 12 feet, the way you wanted to. And the rule for marking arrows with the hunter's name and the Fargo permit number, that's gone, missing. So, is the rule for obtaining permission from property owners if you're hunting on their property. This resolution before you is ambiguous as to whether the private property is still in the plan or not. They are shown on the maps, but they're not actually in the language of the resolution. And then also, last week, I asked about why was the age limit changed, and there wasn't any understandable answer given to us. So, the city decided to get rid of their local rule about that and haven't told us why. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Again, Richard Thomas, longtime Fargo resident. I'm here to speak regarding the resolution for the Wildlife Management Program and would ask that you table that until the public has had more time to study the changes being made. Last summer, Police Chief Zabinski came before you and asked the Wildlife Management Program be ended because it was a safety issue with deadly weapons being discharged in occupied Fargo parks. Since the program was started, the city has grown, and the parks are now more heavily used. He also stated that the program was ineffective. I spoke with him last week, or two weeks ago, and he told me he still believes this is true. Now, I understand he's very busy, and I can appreciate that he has other things on his front burner, so he hasn't been persistent on this. Last year, I went to the parks and collected 350 signatures on a petition from park users asking that the program be ended, as park users do not feel safe for themselves, their children, or pets with deadly weapons being discharged in occupied parks. Many said they refused to use the parks while the hunt was taking place for several months a year. I turned in the petition to the City Commission and to the Park Board. Last fall, a majority of the City Commission voted twice to end the program, only to be persuaded to allow Commissioner Pepcorn three months to study all options. He was then given additional time. After several months, he requested more time, only to come back with pretty much the same program as before, that does not address the primary safety issues of deadly weapons being discharged in occupied city parks, without the safeguards of being overseen by the Police Department. Now, the program concentrates in city parks near high-density residential population areas where local neighborhoods use the parks all year long, including winter for hiking, cross-country skiing, and snowshoeing. As far as I've been able to determine, only pro-hunting advocates have been allowed to participate in any way as to the makeup of the program, or if such a program even should exist. There has been no controlled deer count for over a decade to even determine if there's a deer population issue. The only data used by supporters is self-generated by the deer hunters, and that can be a count done by many hunters of the same deer over multiple times. I ask that the program be based on real evidence and not anecdotal beliefs or wishes of hunters. The parks should be welcoming and safe for all to use. Park users should have the right to feel safe and welcome when they use the parks. I agree with the police chief and the signers of the petition that was turned in that the program should be ended. Thank you.
Public input opportunity. Special assessment list for the Business Improvement District fees. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, we have the annual assessment of the Business Improvement District. There have been a few changes to the bid this year. We've expanded the Zone One to include Roberts Alley and Main Avenue from Second Street to Eighth Street. They've kept the assessment rate the same, and the only change in the dollar amount has been in the increased valuation of the property. The assessment will generate this year about $699,000, and it is an annual assessment. The Auditor's Office hasn't received any protests. And then finally, we have an RFP due for the bid administration in October on the 27th. I think that the bid is here and would like to make a short presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and members of commission. Just wanted to do a brief overview of the updates that we are proposing for the bid zones for 2023. Just for the general public's knowledge, the Business Improvement District, we work to maintain and beautify downtown. The bid is funded through special assessments of property owners and businesses downtown, and those funds are spent strictly for the betterment of the downtown community. A couple statistics as to why it is that we are looking to realign bid zones. Since we submitted this presentation, we've had a new set of data come out. We have now removed over 1,000 pieces of graffiti in the downtown area this year. Our hours of pressure washing are now over 179. We've already exceeded the trash and recycling removed from the downtown area year-to-date this year over complete year totals last year. And so far this year, we have removed 539 biohazards out of the downtown area. Steve alluded to this. We are realigning a couple of areas in the downtown district, moving them into the Zone One category. This is the area in between Roberts and Broadway. This was done at the request of some of the property owners along that area to move Roberts Alley to receive Zone One level services. And then the area along Main Avenue east of Broadway to the river to capitalize and get ahead of the anticipated demand that we anticipate out of that district once those new developments between Epic and the Bell Bank Tower come online. And so, what Zone One means is that those businesses and residents will receive a higher level of litter control and graffiti removal. We pressure wash sidewalks as needed. This funding will allow us to increase the hospitality and safety ambassadors that walk the downtown streets every day. And then we will work with city staff, with Public Works, and with Steve's office to determine what those Zone One amenities will look like, whether they're hanging baskets like you see along Broadway, or potted planters, "Welcome to Downtown" signage, banners, flags, programs. So, we'll work closely with city staff to determine what those amenities are. And that's what we have, and I'm happy to answer any questions if needed.
Any questions? Commissioner Preston.
So, can you just review for the public the relationship between DCP, the bid, and the city?
Sure, absolutely. So, the city uses its special assessment powers on behalf of the property owners to create that bucket of money. That's what the bid bucket of money is. The DCP is the administrator. So, we administrate that bucket of money on behalf of the city and the business owners. So, we help manage those funds.
And the two boards are exactly the same, or?
So, the bid is the nonprofit that has that. We manage that. So, we are, the bid oversight is provided on behalf of the DCP board, and then we have a Business Advisory Committee made up of property owners and business owners in every district of the downtown bid that helps oversee, manage the budgets, and direct the work that our bid crew actually does.
And do you prepare a budget and submit it to the city?
Absolutely, they do. Once the bid assessments are done, we'll negotiate a memorandum of understanding, assuming that we would be, or in hopes that we are awarded the RFP for the next five-year term. We work with city staff to create that MOU and finalize budgets.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak to the bid assessments? Does anybody want to speak? If not, I'll close the public space and ask for a motion. So, a move from Strand. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Colpak. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number B, Assessment of Unpaid Utility Bills. Steve Sprague to explain that as well.
Good evening, Mayor. And I have with me Angie Bear, our utility billing supervisor. She's here for my moral support. So, just a few facts and figures about this year's assessment list. The list was originally created on utility bills that were outstanding as of June 30th, and we had 361 properties on that list. 166 after they received notification, then paid in full, and 53 additional made partial payments, leaving 142 to be assessed. So, then the breakdown on that 142 includes 75 that are storm sewer only. And if you'll remember back to when we created the storm sewer, or the storm sewer utility, we were assessing properties that didn't have a water shut-off, so there was, you know, no collection mechanism. And so, we wanted to make sure that that collection mechanism was going to be through these assessments. So, again, 75 of those storms are only, 36 are in casserole water, so we sell the water to casserole and then provide other city services. And again, we don't have the ability to turn off the water for collection. We had eight that are commercial accounts, and then 23 that are residential, but only nine of those 23 are owner-occupied. The rest are rental properties. So, we wanted to give you that little backup. And I guess at this point, we'll wait to see if you have other questions.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to unpaid utility bills? Is there anyone who wants to speak to unpaid utility bills? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Steve, so you go through a lot of stuff just to try to work with people so they can pay their bills. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And so, we did get a little behind on some of this, and that's why the list got so big. Part of that, there were a number of reasons. Part of it was during COVID, we were told to, you know, discontinue the shut-off, and so that allowed some people to get a little bit behind. We also internally had some staff turnover. We've gotten now fully staffed, and training is back. We also had some new technology in the meter. We also had some new utility -- new technology in the meter department. And so there was a kind of a break-in period with that, too. And I really look at this as really a catch-up, and now we're back on track. We clearly work with any -- anybody that calls in and lets us know that they're having difficulty. It's really when people don't call and don't let us know. We've also worked a lot with property owners, and this is kind of a rollout. In 2018, we passed an ordinance that made the rental properties -- so it's both the owner and the property owner, the property owner and the tenant that are jointly responsible for that utility bill. We have that in our ordinance now, and that was done four years ago. And we've been working with landlords since then to get them so that they can self-manage their accounts, get emails on what those bills are and some of that type of information. So I guess your question was, do we work with people? Absolutely. Yep.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Steve, I had a, and I believe you saw it, an inquiry from a citizen who's very much into special assessments and understanding them. And I'm not so sure it wasn't a question about semantics, but what he asked us was, as per statute, it wasn't his sense, we can special assess to collect uncollected bills. But the answer was a little more clarification. Could you address that for us, please?
Well, and if I get off track, I've got Nancy here for my backup. But the North Dakota Century Code has a very detailed special assessment law. And I believe that, you know, we're talking about this being an assessment for a bill. And if you add the word "special" and you get confused and start thinking it's in that special assessment law part, it doesn't really fall in there. There is a part of the North Dakota Century Code in 4005 that allows assessment for cost of work done. And so the work done in this case is providing those utilities to the property owners or, you know, the picking up of the garbage or the treatment of the sewer, you know, all of those things. And so under that section, we feel that we have the authority. That combined with Article 323 of the Fargo Municipal Code gives us the authority to assess these costs.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Yeah. So moved? No, we already have.
Oh, you have that? Okay. Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Appeal the Board Adjustment Decision to uphold administrative interpretation of land use definition for change of use permit application filed by Gill Investments Limited. Kim Sutowski? I may have that wrong.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Kim Sutowski. She's our new long-range planner. For those that remember Erin Nelson, Kim has replaced Erin. And she is helping us in this appeal application. And since she's got the technical review, she'll do a quick highlight, and I'll be here for any questions.
Good evening. So the item before you tonight is an appeal of a Board of Adjustment decision. The Land Development Code outlines a process for this appeal that you, the Board of City Commissioners, shall consider this appeal decision as a new matter in a public hearing, and that you act to approve or deny the original application. Four votes are required. This began as a change of use permit application in mid-August, and the Board of Adjustment considered the item at their September 27th meeting. The subject property is 74 Broadway, which is in the southwest corner of Broadway and First Avenue North. This location is Zone DMU Downtown Mixed Use, which is intended to preserve the historic business district with enhanced design elements to create a development that is pedestrian-oriented and attractive. The current LDC was adopted in 1998, and there were no previous DMU equivalent zoning districts. The city has embarked on numerous downtown studies that develop a shared community vision for downtown as a family-friendly destination that is walkable and welcoming. So the DMU district goes so far to ensure that this vision is requiring enhanced building designs and materials, including ground floor transparency, to allow pedestrians the opportunity to window shop. Around the same time the LDC was adopted, the state of North Dakota created the Renaissance Zone Program to further incentivize downtown redevelopment. The Land Development Code has a use table that outlines various uses and how they are permitted in each zoning district. Here's an excerpt. So the application, the applicant says, is retail sales and service. And in the blue outline, you can see that that is permitted in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. Adult entertainment centers are not allowed in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. Here are the two definitions of what staff have determined this use could be and what the applicant says. The further definitions are included in your packet. So the LDC, when it was written, acknowledges that not every business proposal fits exactly with the use table and those descriptions. So it goes so far as authorizing the zoning administrator to make similar use interpretations based on the category descriptions. And here are the use category criteria, which include characteristics of the activities, the customer type, and how the business advertises itself. The similar use interpretation categories also guides to review the store layout, inventory, and sales of the proposed use. In summary, 74 Broadway is zoned downtown mixed-use, which requires ground floor transparency to allow window shopping. Many downtown master plans have been developed over the last 20 years to vision downtown as a destination for all ages. Visual examples of the product list from the applicant include items that are adult-oriented. In considering the applicant's proposed floor layout, inventory, limited age for customers, the zoning administrator has determined that the proposed use is an adult bookstore, which is not permitted in the downtown mixed-use zoning district.
And a couple other questions that we bring in front of you tonight at the City Commission for consideration is, basically, is the city within its zoning authority to deny this change of use permit as set forth in the Century Code? Does the reference of stock and trade or adult bookstore definition refer to the collective set of merchandise or only books and reading materials? And is staff applying the comprehensive plans through the implementation of the LDC correctly? These were the discussions in front of the Board of Adjustment as well. And I will say, the staff were recommending denial. The Board of Adjustment also upheld that. As a reminder, this does require a supermajority, as well as the applicant is present to offer any testimony as well. That concludes our presentation.
Is anybody who wishes to speak to this recommended motion?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners. My name is Matt Hoffer, and I'm here to speak to you on behalf of Romantics Fargo. I also have a presentation that I've plugged in here. I'm not sure exactly how to bring that up.
Will someone come help you here in a second?
What's that?
We'll have our staff come over and help, too.
Oh, I appreciate that. Perfect, thank you. Romantics' efforts to open a second location in Fargo have been going on for a number of years. The first proposal was back in 2019, and it looked at opening a store in the light industrial classification. The idea there was to open a establishment adjacent to the existing Salmon Delilas, which was recognized to be a adult business. So the folks at Romantics came up with a proposal. That is, they would take the existing Romantics and, excuse me, the existing Salmon Delilas, and they would remove all of the books, magazines, and other periodicals, which is exactly what causes an establishment to be an adult bookstore. This proposal was provided completely openly to the Planning Department. The Planning Department confirmed back to the attorney, Bradley Rich, on behalf of Romantics that as long as they remove the books, magazines, and other periodicals, that the existing Salmon Delilas would not constitute an adult bookstore such that the new establishment could move next door. This proposal continued on for three years. It culminated with this June 16th, 2021 zoning confirmation letter from the planner. This letter confirmed, based on the information provided, which is also included in your materials, that information provided was that the existing Salmon Delilas would remove all of their books, magazines, and other periodicals. The planner then certified that based on the attached letter from 2019, it is assumed that Salmon Delilas, that is the south of the subject property, would remove most of its sexually-oriented books, magazines, and other properties, which would no longer constitute Salmon Delilas as an adult bookstore. This is a confirmation received, certified, by the Planning Department. The same thing happened with the most recent proposal. Romantics isn't trying to sneak in. They're not trying to get anything past anyone. They've been completely open and forthright with the city through this entire process. So again, Bradley Rich reached out in June of 2022, explained that they had -- they had a business or a space they were looking at at 74 North Broadway Drive. And again, they confirmed that this location would have no sexually explicit books, magazines, or other periodicals. It would have no on-premises viewing. It would have no live entertainment. Therefore, under the existing certified definition of an adult bookstore, the proposed location at 47 Broadway North would not be an adult bookstore. Since this proposal came to the Planning Department, there has been no feedback that would dispute the existing certified definition of an adult bookstore. When the change of use permit was originally filed, Josh Porter, on behalf of Romantics, reached out to the Planning Department. He shared the floor plan that you just watched in the city's presentation. He shared the photographs that were included in the city's presentation and the city's review, and also included as exhibits to our materials. Romantics has been completely forthright with what they intend to do here. They've done their homework. And the reality is, is the definition of an adult bookstore does not change depending on if you're in the light industrial area or the DMU district. What Romantics is proposing to do on Broadway is exactly what the city had approved, certified, was not an adult bookstore in the light industrial zone. And this is not any type of CD establishment. This is a respectable establishment that will have apparel, bath and body works, and also some intimacy items in a back room. But it will have no books, magazines, or other periodicals, which is the trigger under this ordinance. In addition, to trigger the definition of an adult bookstore, these books, magazines, and other periodicals have to be distinguished or characterized by their emphasis upon matter that either depicts or describes certain anatomical areas or specified sexual activities. Matter in this definition doesn't refer to atoms or things that have mass. It's a very specific definition that is a writing, and specifically the subject of a writing. Romantics has been extremely open with the city. They're looking to work with the city, but right now, they have a lot invested in this property. They've secured the lease. They've built out the lease. They have product on site. And this situation reminds me of a recent matter that I handled in South Dakota in Rapid City, where there was an existing definition of what was and what was not a education center. And the city council or commission in that case decided that, well, here we're going to go against that longstanding established definition, and we're going to say that a karate studio is an education center. Well, that matter resulted in litigation, and for the time that store was closed between the application and when I was able to obtain a preliminary injunction, the city ended up paying about $300,000 in damages, and the store is still there. Romantics is here to work with the city, but they have too much invested in this right now to walk away. The definition here is certified. The adult bookstore is the same in the light industrial as it is in the DMU district. And the right choice here is to approve this change of use permit. Adult -- excuse me. Retail sales and use is permitted by right in the DMU district. That is what the permit seeks to apply for. That permit should be approved. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the Commissioners may have.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on this topic? Anybody else in the public who wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. Are there any questions of the staff? Want to ask by any Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that was included in the packet to support the decision of the appeals.
I will. I'll second it.
Moving second. Any discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Could you explain the four-vote requirement, please?
Yeah, I'll start, and maybe Nancy can fill in. But basically, any appeal requires a supermajority vote, and so to stand. And so that requires four out of the five.
And if there aren't four, it fails?
That's where I would defer to the city attorney. I think it probably, in the past, we've maybe interpreted that as non-action. And non-action therefore means approval.
And I apologize, I'm looking, I believed it was four to reverse the decision of the zoning administrator. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
It's a three-two if we appel the decision. Is that what you're saying, Nancy? Supermajority if you want to allow them to do it. It's a three-two vote to not allow them to do it.
I am looking quickly to confirm that, that that is what I understand.
No, I think any appeal requires, yeah. So first, there's the appeal of the zoning administrator, and then the appeal of the Board of Adjustment. Any appeal or anything to go against the zoning administrator or the Board of Adjustment requires four.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colepack?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item D, continue to 103122, here in a dangerous building located at 50921st Street North. Is there a motion?
I move to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We're going to introduce the North Dakota State University President, Dr. David Cook. He's here to explain the loss on Saturday. No, he's --
I'm leaving now.
He's been gracious to meet with the city and myself, and is very excited to work the city of Fargo. And just requested, could he come and just introduce himself to the Commission and make some statements?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the Commission. I really appreciate having the opportunity to be here, so, except for that first comment. You know, really, just want to let you all know that I, you know, really value the partnership that we have with the city and want to see and learn and find ways that we can continue to work together. And if there are issues or problems, would absolutely love to figure out what those are so we can find ways to obviously make our community better. For what it's worth, a quick background on me, a little bit maybe by way of introduction. I grew up in Ames, Iowa, went to Iowa State University, a school very similar to North Dakota State University. And in fact, from the academic side of things, there's just a lot of faculty, staff, family members that have gone back and forth. So it's been kind of fun to be raised in a community with a land grant, and then ultimately find my roots here, most recently at another land grant. So it feels like home a little bit there. But after my undergraduate work, I went to the University of Kansas. So I've lived in Kansas for 20, 25 years, raised my family there. My wife and I are both from Ames, both went on to the University of Kansas and have been, you know, faculty, academics, and all the rest in that role. And then somebody came calling about a job up in Fargo. And my wife and I flew up here in January when it was minus 21, I want you all to know. And we loved it. We really did. And people ask me a lot, what was the attraction? we loved it, we really did, and people asked me a lot, what was the attraction, and there are a lot of things that are pretty fabulous about the community and the institution, but the answer I go back to over and over and over again is the people have been amazing, and I'm guessing you all probably know that, they were amazing in January, I was fortunate to be offered the job in February, I technically did not start until May 17th, and so I did a lot of Zoom calls, a lot of back and forth, I really just want to say how appreciative I am to President Brashani, my predecessor, he let me, you know, do everything I could so when I finally got here, I could hit the ground running, and I still got a lot more to learn, and I'm, you know, drinking from the fire hose, but those couple of months to do everything I could to, to at least try to do my best on day one, I'm grateful to him, and candidly grateful to a team of people, if anybody has any question, do the folks at NDSU work on nights and weekends and all the rest to help the new guy get on board, they absolutely do, and they continue to do that, so started in May, and, you know, have done everything I can to just learn and listen, and, and learn what it means to be a land grant in the great state of North Dakota, I've traveled the state quite a bit, and I've also tried right here in the backyard to do everything I can to learn about, you know, what does North Dakota State University mean to Fargo, to the community, to the county, to the region, and all the rest, and so that's what I've been doing, and it's been, it's been, it's been a lot of fun, and that's a big part of, you know, why I'm here tonight, it's just to extend an invitation and an offer to say I'd love to, I know some faces here, and I can kind of look out over here, and I'm getting to know people in the community, but I just want everybody to know that, you know, I want to keep listening and learning and seeing how we can partner together, and I appreciate everybody's hospitality, it's been wonderful, but hopefully there's just lots of great conversation, dialogues, and opportunity moving forward, and so appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, to say a few words here, thank you.
Thank you very much, I just want the commission to know, we also met with Roosevelt Neighborhood and talked to them a bit about what's going on up north, and he's got his door open anytime if any one of the commissioners want to meet with him and talk about overall goals of the community, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner.
The recommendation for appointment of solid waste utility director, Scott Olson, Scott, can you stand up, are you somewhere in here? Just for you, he's replacing Terry Ledlam, and Mike's going to make a few comments, Redling here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, good evening, and I'm very pleased tonight to introduce Scott Olson as our new solid waste utility director designee. Scott participated in an in-person and a virtual selection process that we had here in September, and so we utilized a selection committee model, want to thank Commissioner Colepack for participating in that committee. Scott has served in a couple of different capacities here for the city of Fargo, most recently as a civil engineer two in the engineering department from March 2018 to March 2021, and then his most recent position was solid waste utility engineer from March 2021 to present, so Scott has quite an experience in personnel management, capital planning, budgeting, and his experience, I think, is going to work really well for our team, he's got a real depth of knowledge as well as it relates to the regulatory environment, no doubt, when, when you work in, in the space of solid waste, you spend a lot of time talking to the state of North Dakota, talking to federal agencies, and so Scott's going to bring that expertise to us in this new position, so I'm very pleased this evening to recommend and forward the unanimous recommendation of our selection committee to appoint Scott to the position of solid waste utility director, and I'll just ask him to make a couple of comments with your permission, Commissioners, before you take your vote, but thank you for your consideration of his appointment this evening, so Scott.
Thank you very much, Mike, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm excited to be here first, and Terry left the department in a very good way, he built a great team there, and those are big shoes to fill, but I'm excited and I'm grateful for the opportunity, I look forward to working with you all and to serve the community and the region in this new role, so, thank you.
Congratulations, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I just want to make a comment, this is my first participation in hiring of a, of a director level position, and firstly, the candidates were incredibly good and strong, and so Scott, congratulations to you, I also want to commend the HR team for the work and the professionalism throughout the entire process, and we can feel really good about the selection process and the candidate we chose, so congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, roll call vote?
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
You have my recommendations for the Fargo Youth Initiative, Commissioner Colepack, you think this is a good group you set?
It's a great group, working with Catlin and planning, they did a lot of the legwork, so we're excited, there'll be five returning members and three new members, and fully support the candidates.
Do I have a motion, then?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colepack?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break and start at six again, thank you.[921.88]
For the 1458 South River Drive Road. The engineering team presented alternatives on October 3rd meeting. And basically, what the commission needs to do tonight is to decide which option you want. So we'll get those up there. So one is a full property acquisition structure removed, full property acquisition structure relocated, full property acquisition and structure reconstructed, and flood wall construction riverside, flood wall construction street side. So if you make a motion, please give me the option. Do I have a motion? Mr. Stern.
I move option E.
E?
E is in Alfred, no Albert. No. Sorry, my brain's not working.
He is in Eddie.
He is in Eddie.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Go ahead, Arlet.
Moved in second, a discussion. Mr. Stern.
I'm just curious if Mr. Stern and the Stern family, is this where you would hope we would lean?
John's usually not that quiet. He normally is very articulate. Yes, it is, yes, yes. Any other discussion, Mr. Colpak?
Yeah, I just, again, for the public's sake, I would like to let everyone know how much work the planning and engineering teams have spent on this along with the residents. And it's really an incredible example of collaboration and thinking outside of the box to find a solution here. And the solution is, happens to also be the least expensive solution as well, so.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, I guess I would be in favor of moving the house to the lot that the city owns. And my main concern is the ongoing costs. I think there's a lot of unknowns with the wall. Obviously, the Stearns are here now. In the future, we don't know what would happen. And I guess, to me, how it's, there's obviously, if you have a wall, like with the city, we have to do ongoing maintenance. We have to put them up and put them down. I think there's a lot of things there that, from my perspective, are unknown. And I think I would be interested to know what the contract is going to be as far as the maintenance of the wall. Is that the city's liability? Is that the owner's liability? Things like that. So that's my main thing. It's a beautiful house, and the city does have a lot. But the key thing is, the city water is right there. And that's a very vulnerable position. And I believe that's why I would be in favor of moving it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Brenda Darian can ask a question about maintenance, but I believe it's a diversion project wall, right? Wouldn't it be theirs?
The in-town projects we own and maintain.
Okay.
And so we'll have anti-graffiti coating on it. And then it will be part of our, I'm pretty sure Ben annually will go through and do, put up the flood wall. So we have to certify that those panels will fit in there. And so I think that's annually.
Mr. Chair, while Ben's coming up, can I just add one thing real quick? My concern is also, so now, the Stearns live in it now. If they sell the house, is it, does it, can that stay there in perpetuity? Is there some type of dead end? Because I think there's a lot of unknowns there. And to me, that's one of the, it's an opening that we should be concerned about for the diversion. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, the biggest thing I can talk about is the maintenance. And really, the maintenance is the exercising of the gates and putting them in. And we have to do that once every three years to certify it with the Corps. And so that's the biggest part of it. It takes, you know, for a wall this size, somewhere around two to three hours to put it in place and then take it back out and put it back in storage on a three, once every three years.
Mr. Preston.
So I'm assuming, and I'm not going to know the correct legal language, but there would be some kind of lien on the property or whatever that would go from property owner to property owner to allow us to be putting that gate in.
Correct. So we would have a document recorded against the property that says specifically what flood stages that we will be installing the wall and shutting off the gates. And so that's where the future commissions, as we move forward, will have to stick by that agreement that's signed and recorded against the property.
Mr. Preston.
So I just think this has been a, it's been a long process, for sure, but has ended up in a good place where we are able to maintain the historic character of this home. And moving it would change that. So I speak in support of this.
Any other discussion?
One more, Mr. Chair. Obviously, the turning off the water and the sewer, that whole responsibility, that's going to be written in the agreement. And so is this, does the city do that, or will the owner?
The city will be shutting the utilities off. And then the agreement will specify this flood stage at which we will be shutting them off.
That is something we'll work with the property owner, to give them proper notification when we'll be doing that. But it'll be set with the flood stages, as Bren has stated.
Any other discussion? Mr. Stern.
Thank you. You know, it's, one of the things about this is it's a relative term, what is historic? You know, it's not like it's an ancient building, but there's a historic relevance to the building. And in my mind, when you have the exact same cost to save a project or a product, a property versus get rid of it, I'd say save it, especially if it's historic. But, that said, and I'm entirely in favor of this, as the Stearns and others know, I'm all about historic buildings and properties. A question I have, though, just so I understand it, is when we had, for example, on Harwood Drive, the Kessel Ring Home, if I remember right, where they had, after the '09 flood, built their own flood wall around their home. Remind me, was that allowed to remain or not remain, or?
So we have, in, we have these three houses in Belmont, and we have the Kessel Ring House still to be acquired. So those are the properties remaining.
So my question might be down the road is if, in this instance, we found an ability to collaborate and have protection around an existing home, is that an option for some of those others at all down the road? Or is the historic issue the difference?
So I would say, engineering's position is, we came to you with the list, with our technical recommendation years ago, on removing all the houses and putting a levy. The discussion back from commission is, we have a historic home, we think you need to reevaluate it. And so we reevaluated this location because we have a home that's now on the National Historic Register. And so that is why engineering evaluated other options.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Colpak?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Yes. Item 41, request to acquire 714123 north, delayed from the 10322 regular agenda, expired by Jim Gilmore.
Thank you.
I guess it's on now. I think a couple of things came up at the last meeting. One was, is there any other source of money where we could acquire this from? I know we had some money set aside for the core neighborhood plan for projects in the neighborhood, but the mayor said a lot of that's committed to trying to acquire some other homes. There's HUD money that might work with this, but the environmental review process is kind of lengthy and long. And one of the other questions that Commissioner Stern raised at the last meeting was, if we were to acquire this property and receive some income from it, where would that income go? And I think you could address that in your motion tonight and say that, should we sell this in the future, that money would go back into the TIF fund and could be used to acquire other properties in the neighborhood. If we do acquire it and clear it, the secondary decision that you can make in the future is, you know, should this be Habitat for Humanity homes? Should it be a land trust home? Or should it be sold for the private market? I think that decision can be made after the lot is cleared. So the recommendation from the Finance Committee was simply to acquire this home, and we could add to that motion that any income go back to the TIF fund to address Commissioner Stern's concern. So the owners were not able to be here tonight, but I think you were able to ask some questions at the last meeting. And so if you have any questions for me, let me know.
Could we have suggested motion? I know you showed it earlier.
This is a motion where you would add that any proceeds from the sale of the property be returned to the TIF district.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Mr. Stern.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Preston?
So since I was the one that was inquiring about additional funding sources, I've also found out that the property actually had been bid upon prior to, prior to the current owner placing a bid even after the deadline. And the prior bid was only $7,500. So this bid that was put in for $30,000 from the current owner certainly probably does not reflect market value in that they didn't do their due diligence to find out whether this property could be turned into a parking lot or not. So what I am saying here is that, to purchase this lot at $29,000, we're probably purchasing it over and beyond what the market value is. And secondly, we are taking on the expense of demolishing the building, which, in my mind, doesn't make any sense at all. So, you know, I truly believe this is a business that just didn't do their due diligence, and I don't know that we should clean up that mistake for them.
I mean, I think, yeah, you're right. The property owner should have maybe checked the zoning, or at least checked into the likelihood of the zoning being changed. I think they thought it could be changed and didn't realize that, as far as, you know, the bank had the property beforehand, and I don't know their process for how they sell things. If you look at the value of the land only, at least according to the city assessor, that's at $30,000, but it's probably worth less because you have this building that'll have to be demolished. But there's not that many properties in the neighborhood where you're going to be able to find a lot in a residential area, even with a rundown house for $30,000.
Well, the other thing is specials actually pay for the teardown. So once you tear it down, that special assess against the property. So if you buy it, you have to pay for the teardown.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up. So if it was deeded over to either Habitat or the CLT, would they be paying for it? Or would we actually sell it for the full cost?
I don't think Habitat would be able to, you know, raise the money. Again, that's your decision, whether you would just give it to Habitat. Habitat's going to try to serve a very, very low-income household, and so they probably wouldn't be able to pay anything for it. You mentioned that the CLT, maybe they would pay the $7,500 for it, or maybe they would ask the city to waive the debt.
So I would suggest, and I'm going to vote against this motion, but I would suggest an amendment to purchase it for $7,500 instead of the $29,000.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Roll call vote. For the amendment to solve for $75.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Mayor. Fran. Remind me, and then I'll ask my question, Jim, but this property is slated by city order to be demolished because it's condemned?
Yes, you declared it a dangerous building at your last meeting, and so there'll be various notices that would go out if it stays in private hands, and eventually it would be, it would be torn down and special assessed against it. Now, if the city were to close on the property or prior to that process ending, you know, the city attorney could, we could certainly end that process and just tear it down ourselves. So it, but that decision would come later.
But the owners, by the city order, are compelled to demolish. And if they don't, then the city steps in?
Yes.
So they're required to demolish this building?
Yeah, you've already made that a requirement, and there's a, I don't know if they've already been past the deadline, but the city's moving forward with the dangerous building process. And Sean, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but.
Yes, during the dangerous building process, they have 30 days after the finding of fact is brought to the city commission to remove the structure. The finding of fact was supposed to come tonight, but because of this action and tabling the decision of the commission, that has not been brought tonight. So it would be, depending on what happens tonight, it will be brought within two weeks, and then 30 days after that, they have to either demolish or we end up demolishing the structure.
Mr. Stern.
Thank you. What, you can maybe remind me as well, I don't recall other instances where we have a property being condemned, where then they turn around and offer to sell it to us proactively when it's in the, when it's condemned. And I don't remember us doing it where we actually bought a property that had been slated by private owners to be demolished because they're condemned. Is this a new precedent?
I can't give you specific examples, but when we had money in the NRI program, sometimes we approached buildings that were on the verge of being declared dangerous and were able to acquire those and demolish those. I don't know, they certainly knew there was a threat of that process moving forward. Again, I can't give you specific examples, but when we had the NRI program, we did have some acquisition demolition money and had done that several cases, and several probably, maybe 20 over a 10-year period.
So these other properties we're demolishing or condemning now, on South 5th Street, 5th Avenue, South 2nd, there's several of them. Does this open the door for them to come to us and say, why don't you just buy this from us?
I mean, they certainly could come to you and, in this neighborhood, some of those other neighborhoods, it's easier to sell because there's more of a market to reuse a lot.
Well, the other issue is we don't have TIF funding to do that. So this is one area we have TIF funding, Mr. Stern, but we don't have it elsewhere in the city. But we do have $1 million in the core neighborhood study, that that $1 million could be looked at. Can you buy some decaying buildings or do different things like that? And I think that is actually something planning has showed us to do, so you'll see that on your agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
So I think, just being very transparent here and having it up on the table, there's probably not going to be a developer that will purchase this lot, I wouldn't think. It's in a place that's at least got commercial on the backside and perhaps on one side.
If you go back to the map, you can see there is single-family homes both north and south of this and across the street.
Yes.
Right next apartment's behind.
But let me, let me go a little further here. I would say it's probably going to be difficult to sell. So if we're truly transparent here, we're talking about $60,000 coming out of the fund, and we may very well never get that back.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Preston?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 42, recommendation to allow business owners who are non-residents to speak during the resident comment period. Commissioner Preston's question.
So I was approached by a business owner that does not live in town and just wanted to extend that ability to speak during the public comment period to someone who either owns property or a business inside city limits but may not reside here. And that's the purpose of the, of the motion.
So as I understood, the public comment period is really for residents of the city that are voters, that can affect the election and/or the people that sit in the dais. So you're opening it up if you're a non-resident, somebody from New York who owns a business in town, or California, or Iowa can now speak to the dais. The idea of public speaking is to have people that have concerns about different motions and such that were in front of us. And the non-resident owners can speak to any one of the commissioners on any one of their concerns and should be able to get some satisfaction from that. But I would be adverse to this because there are non-voters that you're saying. We could have Morehead come up, we could have different cities in Minnesota. And the reality is, you really want to be concerned about the concerns of your constituents, the people that live in the community. You know, I think you're just opening up a speaking period which there are not residents. And although they own a business, I think it should be people who are residents only.
Well, let me get the motion on the table, and we can have more discussion, perhaps. So I would move the recommended motion to allow individuals who own property or business inside the boundaries to address the city commission during the public comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Stern.
A question I have is, I remember, for example, in 2017 or so, when Senator Hitekamp asked to speak to us about opioid addiction issues. Would we limit somebody like that coming and asking for a couple of minutes?
She's a senator of the state, John. I think we'd allow her no different than the governor, but that's a difference with a non-resident. She's actually a resident of North Dakota. She has many things that are important to this commission. They can ask permission, the commission can vote on it.
So I guess my thinking is this, I would entertain, I would support Commissioner Preston. For example, Faith Dixon has spoken to us many times, people say, well, you don't maybe live in Fargo or some say you do, but that's a question. I don't think it should be a question, frankly. If somebody works and lives in Fargo, owns property in Fargo, we have a reason to listen to them. When we had the massage ordinances, we had folks that were disallowed to speak because they didn't live in Fargo. And that was a disservice to them when that's when their business is. So I guess I, my thinking is, I would endorse Commissioner Preston's approach with the notion that if it gets abused or out of hand, we revisit it and tighten it up.
And I would suggest we're going to try to have a gathering of the commissioners to talk about getting things on the agenda, agenda items, how we run the commission as well. And that would be a good thing for our retreat to discuss and have a discussion about, same issue as who can put things on the agenda. And I'd rather delay that till we have that discussion and see what people want to do. Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Mr. Colpak.
Where I'm struggling here, I mean, I can hear both sides of this argument, but these are property taxpaying business owners. And I think that gives them the right to be able to speak on an issue in front of the
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Us.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Item 43, recommendation to rescind the deputy mayor appointment. Commissioners Preston and Stern.
I'll start, Mayor, and I'll keep it simple. And I'm not looking to air all the, any, any or all the reasons I ever would potentially disagree with anybody else on the commission. I would never want to participate in squelching or stifling or chilling speech or voice by anybody. I think that we need to celebrate diversity of people and opinions and always honor them. So that said, I'm absolutely fine with Commissioner Pepcorn being on our commission. It's not my say, anyway. What my issue is, is when we elect an official to represent us and they wear the hat of being our designated person, that's a different thing than being elected by the citizens to sit on a commission. So that's my point. You know, and again, we have examples. I don't know how far down this rabbit hole we want to go, but, but I'll say the most critical turning point for me was when you went on the radio and told them, the public, that you were going to go after our police chief's position. And we hadn't vetted that here, we hadn't discussed it here. You went after our mayor and accused him of not telling us what's going on in his portfolio, not being transparent with us. And I, and I'm just concerned about that, that approach, where we take our city directors, our city officials, our city department heads, our city staff, our people, and put them into that critical eye in the city commission light. You know, I don't, I just think there's a danger to that. You know, when we had the public, we had several public health issues where we were all wrestling with them, but, and we all have a right to disagree. We all have a right to our opinions, absolutely. And Commissioner Pepcorn, I will go to my grave defending your right to your viewpoints and your positions and your mindset. I just personally don't think you should be, you know, I'll say one more thing. Our mayor came to this position because our previous mayor died. So it's not just a theoretical thing that you have a deputy in line in case there's a transition of power through whatever reasons. It can happen, and it does happen. And, and so that's, I'll leave it at that. I just think that we, we need a deputy mayor and a mayor that represents our entire body as best possible.
Mr. Preston.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, for me, it is a leadership issue. And we, as a body, do elect the deputy mayor position. So it is a position that represents us as a body. And just the language and the behavior, I mean, for this last year, there's been at least three incidents. One of them hit the natural, national news, and there's even some impact in regards to the business environment and individuals being concerned about how we function as a commission because of some of the behavior. So to me, it is an issue of how we are branding ourselves, how we communicate to the bigger, larger world, and how, what kind of message we even send to our community members, as well as the staff, and even to each other. We need to be able to communicate in a, in a civil manner to each other. And that incident last fall was a good example of not doing that.
Any other comments? Can you put the motion up, please, Kay?
I make the recommended motion? Or I make that motion?
I think you've already done it.
Did we?
Okay, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Mayor.
Commissioner Colpak.
So, first, excuse me. So firstly, I am truly sorry we're having to consider this action. And I want to thank the citizens who have reached out and shared their comments and their feedback. I read every email and I listened to every phone call, and I try to do that on every issue. But when I ran for city commission, I ran on professionalism and decorum as a candidate, and it resonated with the voters. And I also talked about the importance of taking our code of conduct seriously. Again, that resonates with our citizens. And lastly, if I deviate from our code of conduct as a commissioner, I should expect there will be consequences, or the code of conduct is meaningless. So for those reasons, I'm going to support this motion.
And in time, and many things are going on in the city, and we have many trials and trials and challenges, this is always a difficult decision when you start to get into discussion of removing somebody as deputy mayor. I think Commissioner Pepcorn has supported the diversion, worked very hard on many of the tasks that he's been given, economic development, things around the community. And he's worked hard at that, and he's worked hard at promoting the city. It's unusual that we go to a point of removing a deputy mayor. In fact, the history of the city, I never think we've ever done that. And the balance sometime is what is freedom of speech and what are you allowed to say and discourse that we have at the dais. So we have to allow each other to have discourse and have disagreements and discussions. And we have to look again. I do feel badly that, in many ways, Commissioner Pepcorn has stated that he would work on decorum on the dais, and we've had some difficult commission meetings the last several weeks. But the duties that he's had to do outside that, he's done a very good job in the public, meeting the public, and pushing forth the great things City of Fargo was doing. So I will vote against this, but I feel that we have to do as we do. So roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Oh. So now, by the code of the city or land rules that we have, we need to appoint a deputy mayor this evening as well, in case something would happen. At the first meeting, at every meeting, we have election, we theoretically will elect a member as deputy mayor. So I'll bring that forth in front of you, is that we now have to select a deputy mayor. Do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Mr. Stern.
I would move Arlet Preston be named our deputy mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Difficulty I have with this, Commissioner Stern, is Arlet Preston ran against me in the mayor's race in typical. in the mayor's race, and typically when you have a deputy mayor, the mayor and the assistant mayor have to work well together. Arlette Preston has also demonstrated over and over that she does not necessarily follow the rules that we have agreed upon. As liaison commissioner to the police force, I regularly meet with the police force and find that Arlette several times makes a meeting and has a meeting without me present, which is one of the rules we have. In addition to that, rental registry was turned down twice by this commission, and Commissioner Preston continues to work with the inspection department on rental registry and continues to work with the planning department on rental registry. Recently, we had a board of health change on bylaws, which is coming later for you to vote on, and Bernie Dardis found he was going to put off the commission. He was going to be put off the board of health. That never had the light of day in city commission chambers. My concern is that Arlette Preston has her own agenda, and she would like to move forward to her own agenda, which is not in concert with the mayor. So my concern when you do that is that you are electing more of a dysfunctional commission. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say something. You know, I think one thing that's not been very clear here is truly our code of conduct. If you actually look at our code of conduct, it doesn't spell out some of this discourse that we've been hearing and seeing. So one of the things that I would offer is that, and you, you and I have talked about a retreat for probably about a year. It hasn't happened. I would say we need to do that by the, you know, within the next couple of months. With that, talking about what our roles are here. And when we reach out to other departments, because certainly there's been a lot of cross-department questions and meetings happening, and I don't have any trouble with that. People meeting with planning or health, and it may be, you know, something that would, that would be of interest to me. I have no trouble with people reaching out and asking questions or asking for meetings. So if indeed that's truly something that we should not be doing, and we make these really strong walls that don't allow that, by all means, I will, I will abide by that. But I do think to get there, we need to have a retreat. We need to understand what our roles are and how we can get questions answered as well as clarify the code of conduct, which includes the behavioral stuff that we're seeing up here, and the consequences, spell out the consequences for not following it, as Commissioner Colpak has, has brought up. You know, I don't know that it's been real clear what our censoring process could be, should be. School board has a real clear process for doing that, and I would say we could probably follow some leadership from that body. So I would, I would really like to see this retreat with a facilitator happen within the next month and a half to two.
We have that planned out. Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Colpak.
So I absolutely support that work and have been also talking to the mayor about, about that work needing to be done as a commission. I also, you know, I don't think it's helpful as a commission to be having, you know, I mean, yes, transparency is an expectation of this board, but to the community, I think we need to come more prepared. You know, I support every commissioner up here and will continue to work with every commissioner, but the filling of this vacancy to me seems really reactionary right now after tonight's motion, and I would, and it's not against Commissioner Preston. I just know how important it is, and it's the reason I voted for Commissioner Pepcorn to be named deputy mayor right after the election, is there needs to be a good working relationship between the mayor and the deputy mayor. So I just need more information. So I, I'm not going to vote tonight to approve the deputy mayor until I have more information and I'm comfortable with that recommendation.
So, Mr. Chair, actually, we're required to have a deputy mayor, so there is no time. This is what we do tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Strand.
Something I'd just like to add to the discussion is, is Commissioner Preston is in, if I recall, you're in your third term here at the city commission. You had two terms in the nineties.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And you're in your third term now, so you have more term time here at the table than I do, for example, quite a bit. More, so you have more experience. You also have run for mayor twice in the city. You ran when Danny Wallaker won, and you ran this last year. So I guess that's a guiding light to me as somebody who is saying, and I'm guessing Commissioner Pepcorn will probably run for mayor in, in four years. I wouldn't be surprised by that at all, and people expect it. But I, I just see Commissioner Preston as having indicated she's willing to step up and do that lead.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
No.
Number forty-four, application of private accusation improvements made to building. Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Liaison commissioner upgrades. John?
Certainly, I'll start. I, I've been very engaged with the DCP people and folks and leadership, and, and we're, I'm happy to report that there's just a lot of action there going on with the topic of downtown. Today, our quality of life committee meeting met, and it was my first time with them. So I'll just simply leave it at that. There's an immense amount of conversation about all these different topics of safety downtown and buskers and amplified noise and hours of performance, and those things are just all over the board. We're fortunate, they're very engaged. Lastly, the Native American Commission, we saw a video, so I'll keep it short, but they named Darlene Tenbear Boyle as the, the award recipient of the Gladys Ray Honorary Award for, for native service. That was just a, a significant achievement for Darlene as well.
Any other? Mr. Colpak?
I have a deck here. Just a couple of updates. The first is with communication and government, government affairs. They've hosted several League of Women Voter debates in the commission chambers, and it's been played across social media platforms as well. Creative services members went behind the scenes with the Fargo Fire Department, including embedding themselves, and in addition to that, did some videography and shared public information. Media Day was held October 12. And they also, one thing that the communication team works with, with all departments on is media interview etiquette. We also launched a robust social media campaign featuring videography on the seven, using seven current officers, investigators, detectives to aid the recruitment of the Fargo Police Department Academy. So more to come there. Collaborating with Fargo Cast Public Health on its suicide prevention campaign, and working with Cast Clay Food Partners on a five-part videography series to promote its work and impact within, within the community. The Fargo Fire Department, that's a picture of station number eight, a rendering, continues to work on station number eight in South Fargo, and all of the fire department supervisors participated in a half-day of training provided by the Career Survival Group.
Very good.
I have a couple more.
Sorry.
Sorry. Solid Waste Department, following as we, as we learned tonight, we met the new director, Scott Olson. So welcome. And they're continuing with their capital improvement projects, installing a perimeter fence around East Campus. Couple more. I'm almost done. Human Rights Commission is now, after the last meeting, we're fully staffed at eleven members, excited about the new additions. And then planning's underway, working with Dr. Hogan for Martin Luther King Day for 2023. Fargo Youth Initiative, as of tonight, is fully staffed as well. Their kickoff will be Sunday, November 13. And they had a meeting with Jen Sar, with Fargo Public Schools Multi-Tierred System of Support Coordinator to collaborate on mental health, which is one of their initiatives. And as I said, they're also collaborating with Dr. Hogan on Martin Luther King Day for 2023. And then we've already talked about this, but it's big news. The City of Fargo's water treatment plant earned the Top Taste Award at recent North Dakota Water Population Control Conference. Congratulations to Troy Hall and the entire team.
Arlette?
Yeah, so a couple of things. I think it was a couple of weeks ago now, the acute cares, the acute psychiatric care interim committee for the legislature met here in Fargo, and Mayor Mahoney and Chief Zabolski and Jan Eliason and I attended that and provided some testimony to encourage the legislature to look at community-based kind of mental health, chemical dependency kind of services. The second thing, I went out to Bismarck for, it was a housing summit put on by the North Dakota Finance, Housing Finance Agency, and report was given on a full statewide housing needs assessment, which was done by the Center for Social Research out of, out of NDSU. And on their website is the full report, so if anybody's interested in looking at it. It was fascinating, actually, and it was a very short report on it, about an hour's worth, but it was short. So there'll be a lot of data in that that will feed into our metro-wide housing study. Looking forward to seeing the results from both of those. And thirdly, the planning department is starting to organize staff reaching out to the core neighborhoods to give updates, and hopefully, and I'm not remembering the date, in November, I think it's the second Saturday, something like the 11th, yeah. We will be holding a, a staff meeting with the neighborhood coalition to provide some feedback on the implementation of the core neighborhood plan. And then finally, I just want to recognize Desi. She was, she received an award from the North Dakota Medical Association called the Friend of Medicine Award, and it was in recognition, recognition for outstanding and selfless public health leadership during COVID-19. So congratulations, Desi.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Go updates, Mr. Chair.
I have number three, resolution relating to the city wildlife management program for 2022-23 season. Nancy Morris to explain. Or Mr. Strand to explain?
Mayor, I'm not looking to explain what I'd like to do upon the request of some citizens who are here who've asked for some audience time with the commissioners and those folks deciding this. I'd just simply move a delay for two weeks so that they can have that opportunity to share their concerns about the new policies that, that they're, that I'm, as I hear it, they're very seriously wanting them addressed.
Christopher Gohn brought these issues up two weeks ago, John, and had two weeks to go through those, doing those two weeks' time. Both of those members did speak at the public speaking. There's nothing Nancy's changing on the ordinance, as far as I'm concerned. Nancy, do you want to address the issue, please? And Mike Redinger as well.
Good evening, commissioners. Let me just very briefly provide a recap of some of the public discussions leading up to the vote tonight. Tonight, if you think about the resolution being the implementation vehicle for the ordinance revisions that have already occurred, that's really what you're doing tonight. I understand some concerns have been raised just about some language that previously was in the ordinance, whereas in policy that is now being removed. And I think, you know, this can really be summarized in a couple of different ways. Number one, we're really pointing back to the North Dakota game and fish regulations to conduct this hunt. So there are some things that are not going to be seen in our language and our ordinance moving forward, simply because we're now deferring to North Dakota regulation. We had a meeting on October 4th with the Park District, with the Sandhills Club, as well as the Auditor's Office, just about how we're going to implement the hunt for 22-23. And so I think we've got our process and our procedures pretty well understood. But to some of the concerns that were raised about some of the very specific intricacies of how high sand heights are going to be and things of that nature, those will be taken up as we implement the program with the Park District. But really, all you're doing tonight is taking the revised Fargo program, removing the police department, and then essentially doing, as Nancy and I were talking today, essentially doing what the City of Bismarck is doing with their program, where they're utilizing their Park District as well as a volunteer club to help out with the administration of the program. And so what we intend to do this evening as well, after approval, if approved this evening, is to certainly work on some public notification yet this month, as well as some news releases on the Park District side, as well as city side, and just talk about where we go from there. But I think there's just perhaps a misunderstanding about what we're doing tonight. There's really no new issue from the ordinance revisions. The ordinance is really where the meat of, of the revised program exists, and really tonight, this is just the implementation resolution. So I'll leave it at that, but I have to answer any other questions commissioners would have.
Nancy?
I would just concur with Michael that we, the ordinance was presented to you over three readings, and that was modification to the existing program. And the city continued to work with Sandhills Archery Club and the Fargo Park District. And presented to you today is the resolution, which would identify where hunting is to take place, how many permits will be issued, and that those individuals will be required to have game and fish licenses in order to secure permits from the City of Fargo.
And if I could add, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I would also just add that, just to clarify too, we're only talking about park district or city-owned property managed by the park district. There are no private properties continuing in this program. We, through the park district's guidance and input, that program is smaller than it was in previous years, so we're only talking about the public properties that are detailed in those maps that are in the packet tonight, and that will be part of the public information and outreach as well that the park district will have. So I just want to clarify that as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
So is there some process where the park users are going to have the ability to provide input from here on out? And second question is, it sounds to me like we're still kind of in it by specifying the number and some of the other things in this resolution?
So let me start with your second question first, if I could. So in terms of the input about the number of permits that will be issued, we have participated in the discussions because we're the current holder of the program, sort of transition this, right, to Sandhills Club, as well as the Park District. So that input was provided in consultation with the Park District. And because we've also been the previous program holder, if you will, with game and fish, we've had to keep them in the loop about what we're intending to do here. So yes, we've still had involvement as we've looked to transition the program out of the police department and to these other outside entities. In terms of outreach that will happen now after this, I talked a bit earlier about the public information in the form of news releases. And then the Park District also, I'm, I haven't talked to them directly about this, but when the hunt actually starts, they're going to be in designated areas. And so however they want to notify their users via social media, via their website, we'll certainly talk to them about that, but that will be something as courtesy. We'll want to make sure that their park users know and are aware of when that hunt occurs, and probably more importantly, when it closes. So what we have for the, the permission that we've been granted from the state is the ability to operate a condensed program this year.
Just a follow-up question, if I could. So I think the concerns have been the age issue. Where is that coming from? Is that the state game and fish that's allowing that under 14? So there's no, there's no input that would be available to that decision?
So the age piece originates from game and fish regulation. You can be a minor in North Dakota, and you can hunt at 16. We are asking that the minors be accompanied by adults. The adults do not need to be a hunter that are in the program, but the adult does need to be somebody that can supervise that, that minor as they participate in the program. That was a discussion point with the club and with the Park District back in our October four meeting.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, Mayor, I-
Mr. Strand.
For the sake of debate, I move that we table this till our next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
My, my point is this. I know that these folks have really tried hard to communicate with me and engage with me, and I, I don't know if they're having success or not getting through to the other commissioners or not. But if we get to the point in two weeks from now, you've had a chance to hear them or not, I'm fine with that. That's just a request that I've asked, they've asked me to give them a chance to try, bend our ear.
Well, they've been talking the whole time as we've gone through this, John, so I think many of the concerns were the age and some other elements that Mike basically has outlined.
So, Mr. Chair, we've been working on it for a year and a half.
Yeah.
So to say that they haven't had opportunities to have input is disingenuous.
Roll call vote on the amended motion to table for two weeks.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Colpak?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Roll call on the motion to move ahead.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Resolution related to qualification members of responsibility of the Board of Health. Nancy Morris and Ian McLean to explain. Ian?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. There's two resolutions in front of the, in front of the commission. One deals with the responsibilities of the Board of Health. To go, to go a little bit backwards, in March or April of this year, the Board of Health was looking to amend its bylaws. Within its bylaws, actually has its own duties and responsibilities. The city attorney's position is that's more appropriate for this commission to tell them what their responsibilities and duties are. You wouldn't have a Board of Health determine its own responsibilities and duties. So it basically just takes it from the bylaws and it puts it into a resolution with small changes. The other change is to the makeup of the Board of the City Commissioners. Our ordinance thirteen oh two oh four says that the commission shall be at least five members. One member shall be a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Other members of Board of Health shall be appointed with such qualifications as, as shall be determined by the Board of City Commissioners. That's, that's never happened. So our goal here is to put a resolution in front of you, which will actually put those qualifications for, forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Preston, you want to explain what the Board of Health was thinking as we came along with this?
Sure. So part of this is, let me also explain from a larger perspective as well. There has been a number of discussions with staff as well as with this board to look at bylaws and where bylaws don't exist, to actually put them in place. The Board of Health does have a set of bylaws. So one of the things that became evident as we went through this COVID experience is that all the other commissions, and this one included, provides technical expertise and advice to us as a board, as a city commission. And the Board of Health had, I think, nine members, if I remember correctly, five of them being non-health-related type of appointments and only four, or five, four, yeah, four, that were individuals that work inside the health systems. No one understand health issues. So that was a concern of ours. So the in, the intent here that the Board of Health is coming forward with was to revise that membership to make sure that the advice coming from the Board of Health is truly related to and based on standards of practice, best practices within the health community and providing just good, solid technical advice on the health issue. So that was basically the background for bringing this forward. And I see the Board of Health has a couple of representatives here, but it, I don't believe this is an open, open discussion kind of item. But if you would like, they certainly, I'm sure, would be willing to speak.
So the Board of Health has nine members, members that are in political side are the, somebody from City Fargo Commission, somebody from the Cass County Commission, the West Fargo Mayor, or whoever they determine, and a rural representative that the county represents to us. That's four basically political positions. In addition to that, it's a physician and doesn't have to be Tracy Newman. It has to be a physician in the community and a behavioral health specialist. So that takes up six of the positions. There are three at-large positions and that's a question that the at-large positions could be advisory. The reason the state does that is in other areas, it's actually the commissioners and politicians make more of the Board of Health. And what we're trying to do with our Board of Health is be more advisory in nature. So the idea was is to have three political people, somebody from the city commission, somebody from the Cass County Commission and somebody from West Fargo. So you'd only have three politicians on it. You'd have a physician representative and a behavioral health representative. So now you're up to five. So it's basically two at-large people that you put on there. I think what the board is trying to do is have some choice in those two people that come in. They would apply for the position and the board would try to, with the help of Desi and Tracy Newman and, and the commissioner from City of Fargo, would basically work on who should go on that board. The balance on the board is, is that oftentimes, public health plan might be different than you as a committee might like or what you're interested in. Mr. Strand, interested in suicide addiction, should we put more emphasis there? It's only advisory board. So Desi Fleming is in charge with her team to come up with a plan for the year and go through that. And basically oftentimes presents to the Board of Health and the Board of Health, in a sense, gets a way in on that. But they are not a governing board, they're more advisory board in that nature. What we discovered was the City of Fargo makes the appointments through the Board of Health. So these people that are appointed, it's important that the commission weighs in, yes, we're okay with these changes. So basically you're going from nine to seven and you're going to be more deliberate in the people you put on the board. And Chelsea's been excellent at it and been really working going forward on trying to make it a board that has a little bit of teeth and vaccines, we really like to push hard, different things we'd really like to do as a community. So those are the changes I just wanted the commission to be aware of because it was on the consent agenda. And I think it's important when you get a phone call from somebody in the community, oh, you did change it and these were the reasons you changed it. So I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I would move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Return.